Call this meeting to order at 7:01. Can Mrs. Steele lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of, let's do July 22nd, '24 first?
I move we approve the minutes of July 22nd.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any corrections, Mary Lee?
Certainly.
Okay.
Under the UDR discussion, I believe this is completely wrong.
Tell me where you're at, Mary Lee.
Second page, down third paragraph, under UDR discussions. Can't find it.
Okay, it's in the middle of the page.
In the middle of the page.
Okay.
All right. To me, it's completely wrong. We discussed the section 712 relative to the trailers. Rob had written up something, a trailer may be parked on private property, providing that the trailer is parked no closer than six weeks to, six feet to any lot line, has a current registration, is well parked, and in a condition that shows it can be moved at any time. Trailers in the park shall be not be used as living quarters for longer than a two-week period of time unless otherwise authorized by the DRB. We discussed that, we agreed on it, but we never actually go back. And then, down through section 713, still in the same section, it doesn't even mention it here. It goes 713, and it was, no structure shall exceed a height applicable to the district except when waived by the DRB. The DRB can issue a height wa- waiver, providing the height imposes no adverse effects on neighboring properties or the surrounding landscape. We also discussed that, and we also okayed it without a formal vote.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. On page three. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The tenth line, they have made the trip to pick up a new fire truck. It is a nice and truck is and is in town. Makes no sense.
Well, the truck's not in town, anyway. So that's wrong, right? The truck's at the, getting rebuilt.
At Harrods in Syracuse.
It is a nice and truck and is in town.
It's a nice truck, and it's at Harrods in Syracuse, is I guess how it should read.
Do we want to change the beginning of it? Do we need to put people's names there, or just leave it as? Do we want to change it to the firemen, or? What do you want to do there, guys? Do we need to do anything?
I don't know who picked it up.
Mike does, I don't know. Do you want to change that, or are you gonna?
It was the chief and, chief, myself, and two officers from the fire department.
You guys, whatever you want to do.
The chief, the town manager, and two officers.
Perfect.
And down, further down. It starts, M. Brown asked. They're missing a word. The second sentence, it says, M. Brown felt maybe a great time to, instead of it may be a great time, you need to put it in there. And guess what, that's all.
Rob?
I only had one, down on the bottom of page one. Spelt my name wrong. There's an E on the end of Steele. And then Mary Lee got the other ones ahead.
Okay, Mark?
I'm good.
Can I get a motion to approve those minutes of 7:22? Or did you do that already? You did that already, Mary Lee, didn't you?
Yes.
I got a second on it, too?
Yes.
Okay. Call the question to vote. All those approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for nothing. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of July 25th?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for July 25th.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay. What do we got for corrections there, Mary Lee?
None.
None? What's that?
I don't have anything either.
Mark?
I'm good.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of July 25th?
Aye.
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 Motion passes for nothing. Okay. You got all the corrections on that first one, Mike?
I got them, and Allison is hopefully, Allison, do you get all the corrections on that first one?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. I was gonna ask Mary Lee for a copy of the letter, because I don't have mine with me. No, I have it from the last packet, I just don't have it in front of me to quote, writing it down.
Oh, I got extra copies if you wanted to.
Do I have any citizen comments or concerns of subjects not on the agenda?
I have one.
Can you, just, can you come here, Scott? All right, sorry. Just hard to hear sometimes.
You gotta say your name, too.
Scott Welch, Castleton Tree Warden.
Thank you very much.
So I just wanted to pass on a little information for you, the board. You approved our man lift and a couple of harnesses. It's been used by John at Crystal Beach once. I used it at Crystal Beach for half a day or so. We've done two jobs on Main Street. And then we, on Crystal Heights, we had a road closed with three large, I call them mastwood. So we were able to do that job also with a basket. It took more than half of a day with a couple of dump trucks and, yeah. So to make a long story short, my figures show we're about $4,700 worth that we have saved. And I think we paid for it and bought it for around $3,800. So just, you know, thank you. It's a piece of equipment everybody is gonna use this winter a lot on our roads. So, you know, I'm just trying to bring you up to speed, and it was a very good item to buy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, too, Scott.
I hope you guys just never get quick on safety on that machine.
Oh, yeah. Nope. You've still got me on camera, don't you?
Hopefully.
No.
Thank you.
There's nobody on Zoom, but their hand's up. For citizens' comments.
Okay.
Nobody raised, nobody else raised it? I wasn't looking when they answered.
Nope, nope. I think we're all good. All right. Animal control officer appointment? You wanna, you wanna handle that? Mr. Jones, or?
Yes, thank you. So right now, the Colonel, the current animal control officer, we, we've had a sighting, so we know he's around. But he is, we have his gear back from his residence. He's not living there anymore, so we had to get the stuff back. But he's no longer working as an, in the capacity of an animal control officer. So what I'd asked the select board to consider was, is he was appointed as an indefinite to terminate that appointment and appoint somebody that's actually going to do the bidding that, for the animal control officer's position. So we had a letter submitted from Mike Alexander, letter of interest to be appointed to the town, and it says the remainder of the current term, but it was indefinite. So, there was no, like, end date to that.
He doesn't know what he's signing up for, does he?
Till death do us part.
Yeah. Let's get him signed up pretty quick here.
So if you-
Before he changes his mind.
So he did ask me a bunch of questions, so we had a conversation about how he gets trained and the process, and so basically what happens is he works with the police chief to learn, because he has to get a ticket number, and then he has to learn how to write the complaints, and how to deal with people, and write reports. So there's a little bit of a training time that he has to spend with the chief before he gets let out into the public. So he's aware of that, and he says he has experience managing domestic and wild animals. So, whatever that means. So, but he's interested, and you don't have to make an indefinite period, you can make actual, it says, I think, copy the ordinance is behind us, right? Yeah. The last one, the last appointment, and then I had Karen look up what the term is by state law, and it says each town or city can determine the appointment process, term length, and specific duties of their animal control officer. So if you didn't want to make it indefinite, you could put an actual term to it.
We terminate it for any reason at any time?
Because it's an appointment.
Yeah, absolutely. We leave it as is.
If you, if you want to make that appointment, you have, I think you have all his addresses on there, and I can send him a letter and let him know you, you made the appointment as an indefinite appointment, if that's the way you go.
I make a motion-
First, don't we have to make a motion to remove the current animal control officer?
I got a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to remove C. Forrest as the current animal control officer.
You got a second on it?
Effective.
Effective immediately.
I second.
Okay, he seconded it. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Can I get a motion to appoint the new?
I make a motion we appoint Mike Alexander for an indefinite period of time as our animal control officer.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
I had, I just had one question, Mike.
Effective today?
Immediately?
Effective today.
I just had one question on this. Where, where is all the equipment that goes along with the animal control officer gonna be kept, Mike?
The major, the majority of it's kept in the shed out behind the office, but, because we have the large kennels and stuff like that, but the stuff he might need to go out with, like, the leather, Kevlar gloves, he'd be retaining that, but we, we sign that out to him, so we know what he has in the office.
And obviously, you'll have keys to get into the-
Yeah, it's a padlock, we give him a set of keys for it.
Okay, okay. Can I add one thing to that? Absolutely. Should we change those locks? Because we've had quite a few keys made.
That was, Karen had already brought that to my attention, that key's still out there, we haven't got back from the previous person, so they're gonna change the locks and call everybody in, because the Ray Lad and the historical cemetery, they store their stuff out there, too.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this Mike Alexander is John's older brother?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you want to speak to it at all, John, or?
He heard about it, and then he asked me about it, and I, so we talked for a while, and he was, he said, one of those things, he said, I always want to do something like that, so here it is.
Here's your chance.
Yeah, he won't say that one week from now, but-
I think we all know he's had a stellar career as a military officer, as a guidance counselor, and a school administrator, so I think maybe that dealings with people is more important than dealings with animals, because that's, the animals are rarely having problems, it's always the owners, so I think he's pretty well qualified.
Thank you. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike Alexander is our new animal control officer.
We'll get stuff updated, the website, and get the training started, and all that stuff.
Just because I'm looking at this paper here for the old minutes, do we need to do something with the assistant tree warden?
Oh, I, yeah, because, well, I don't, I don't think they appointed assistant tree warden to the last time, so it kind of, what was, was there a term elicited to that one? I'm looking what you-
Doesn't say. Unless it's on the back.
I have to look that one up, Rob.
Okay.
I, I think there was a term with that one. Do you have a term with yours, Scott?
Yep.
Yeah, so there's a term with that one.
Okay.
Because last time they came around, we didn't even appoint an assistant. Or I say, we, you guys didn't.
Our previous animal control officer was the assistant tree warden. Okay.
But he hadn't done anything for a couple of years at least.
Okay. All right. Recreation update?
You guys all got that in your, in your box?
We did, a couple of different copies of it.
Okay, so you got my update. It's a bit worrying, once again, kind of a big month, obviously, we, we had adventure camp, and we had approximately, an average of 45, 46 participants. One week was up almost to 60, that first week of July. It's a much slower week, and I surmise that it's because families are enjoying their own vacation time during that period of time, so their, their children really don't need to go anywhere, so it's something to consider going forward, whether or not we actually entertain that week, because it's definitely a losing week in terms of the overall staffing, monetarily. You're, ideally, it's between 50 and 60 people for five to six staff members, the ratio that had been pre-established was a one to 10 ratio, so 50 people, five staff members. There will be a process that I've invited the staff members to participate in, kind of a term from the Military Act After Action Review. So basically, it's just an evaluation process that we're gonna go through. There's gonna have to be some, I'll have the numbers for the next meeting, the last payroll went in this morning, so we'll have the final numbers, and there's gonna be another deficit run this year, for sure. I don't know that it will be to the extent that it was last year, but there was, you know, obviously, this was a program that I inherited, and just, there's a more of a, you know, first blush looking at it, I encouraged them to increase their rates from 50 to 75, and that wasn't based upon any particular in-depth review of the numbers associated with it. It was more of just, geez, if you ran a deficit last year, you, it behooves you to at least raise them, and it was a significant raise from 50 to 75 for residents and 85 for non-residents, but it was still inadequate to cover the increased expenses. One of the largest increased expenses will be the payroll. There was raises that were agreed to, and, you know, for the directors, and it, it's a significant increase, the directors, co-directors, Becky, Lampier, and Bethany, we split a 40-hour position, ideally, we split 40 hours, and $25 an hour, so there's, and that raise came just prior to the beginning of the camp. When the captain got it, it was sent to me for approval, and actually never went, as I understand, through the necessary process that's normally associated with raises. I really didn't know what to do with it at that point, other than they needed an answer, and it was, for me, it was an affirmative answer. On the high side, it should have been a more in-depth process, looking at just the numbers and what we could afford, and something I probably should put more emphasis on, because what happened was, for staffing, we did have some staffing issues over the course of it, and oftentimes, it was Becky and Bethany that would, or primarily Becky, that would end up covering for the other staff members, and her rate of pay is obviously, you know, seven or eight dollars more per hour than the regular staff, so, and then, if she was over 40 hours, something else that was introduced, new this year, was that individuals were entitled to overtime, whereas in years past, they were not paid overtime. Another small portion of it is the checkmate system, which we did introduce to the adventure camp staff, and, you know, just a small 15 minutes here or there, which was, you know, previously just didn't, completed in a written time report, you know, all those minutes add up over the course of, you know, a pay period, and so even if it's three-quarters of an hour, it's still three-quarters of your hourly rate, so. All those things taken into consideration, I anticipate there will be another deficit run for the program, and another large increase, or, it's, it's, it's almost like having another staff member is the busing for camp. One trip, one way from the, the school to the Crystal Beach, 20-minute trip, you know, that includes loading and unloading, is $200. So, you know, that's $600 a week, so that, in my opinion, kind of motivates me, or to think about the options available to us to be able to address transportation, because one of the things that I'd like to be able to see the program do is more a weekly educational field trip, which obviously, if a 20-minute trip to Crystal Beach is $200, transportation would be, just wouldn't be possible. So whether it's the acquisition of a school bus for the purposes of summer camp, a used school bus for $10,000 to $15,000, it wouldn't take long to be able to pay for something like that, and it would also be something that could be utilized to support transportation for school activities associated with the supervisor.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Anyway, that is just another subject matter for adventure camp, and as I explained to the staff, to the staff and the directors, we got excellent feedback from parents and children on the camp, they truly, it's a very valuable asset, for the folks that live and work in Castleton and visit Castleton, where they don't have childcare lined up just for the summer months, it would be next to impossible to find childcare just for that reason alone. So it, it does provide a very valuable resource for working parents during the summer months, and that is primarily the folks that are using the program. So it has value in that regard, but I did explain to the staff that, you know, that space is, in the school, is dedicated for that purpose, and they use a lot of space. So that space is, otherwise, you really can't dedicate it to any other year-round function. So they have to, when we have to, I have to, take a hard look at, you know, even if we had something that was just meeting once a week and was producing, you know, $150 a week in revenue for those classrooms, it's better than a negative balance, you know, for the dedicated time and space that they need. So all those things have to be taken into consideration, we have to take a hard look at what neighboring camps are charging, and I've done an initial review of it, and we are well below the average, basically half of what neighboring camps are charging, other than boys and girls clubs. Boys and girls clubs are not necessarily supported by the towns so much as, you know, secondary entity, but town-run programs, and they don't have the facilities that we have as a general rule. Most definitely, they don't have access to Crystal Beach. So taking a hard look at what we're charging per week, and we did run a successful scholarship program, and there may actually be some carryover of that scholarship fund, not a lot, but we are gonna maintain a year, over-year fund for those dedicated funds to be able to continue to support that. So that's adventure camp. Right now, we're moving along towards soccer, getting Dewey Field set up for, kind of, that first non, it's not sanctioned, it's just the initial pickup soccer program that Coach Powell Mason is leading out at Dewey Field, so we've had the poles repaired, dug them out of the woods, getting the nets and whatnot organized, laying out the fields, we're gonna try and work out an arrangement with the high schools to be able to use their painter, which is an actual professional painter that I use when I work with the school. That's something else that I shared with Mike, the price on a new painter for us to be able to have, our own painter for that, for that purpose in the athletic fields, and it's also something that could be used by the town crew for updating crosswalks and stop lines and whatnot. It will pay for itself in a single, single season of use for that purpose. So that's pretty much the extent of that. I did set up and had a meeting with Devin Neary from the Rebel International Planning Commission, trying to come up with a plan for recreation, to understand that Killington is going through their planning phase for recreation right now, just to be able to get a little bit more direction on which way, and what programs we want to focus on, and the best utilization of the services. That's what I got.
John?
Oh, go ahead, go, go, go. Who wants to go first?
Mrs. Harris was first.
Okay.
On the paying overtime, I think it's the state law, is it not, to pay over 40 hours?
That was my understanding.
Whether we ever did before or not, that-
There was an exemption based upon, because it was a beach, and, and, but we went through some labor law classes here recently, and that's when we said, yeah, we don't, we don't, we can't do that anymore, we can't, we don't qualify for whatever it used to be, so we had to start paying the overtime. But there was an exemption, they, they mentioned it in the class, that, yeah, there used to be an exemption, but it's no longer, so we had to, we had to start paying the overtime.
A couple of things, you said that there was a carryover from scholarship money?
Right, yeah.
Can they carry that money over to next year?
They can, under rec has a- They can, under, um, REC has a fund for special events.
Okay.
Here, we set up a, they did it for Sail Camp, and so we followed that model.
Great. Um, also, we should make sure that we get a letter to T.W. Ferguson, if they're doing that work gratis, maybe even get some recognition on the town webpage, or?
Yeah, can you write something up on that, John, that, what they're doing, what they're giving us?
Sure, I'll put it on our, um, Facebook page and our webpage. We'll have our, you know, pictures and whatnot for soccer, football, first games, and we'll include something to that effect.
And provide them a receipt for that value, too, that they can use as a tax deduction, because that's going to be pretty substantial.
And talk to Josh about it, because he actually brought this stuff over, and something we can use, friends of REC, to be able to process that through, to make sure they get what they want, if taught, if so desires.
And the last, the last thing I have is a reminder that on eight-twenty-eight, we have a meeting with the Select Board, the REC Director and the REC Commission.
We talked about it, are we going to do that? We're going to do it, okay.
We're going to do it and establish, uh, hopefully some guidelines on where that program's going to go in the next year, and who's going to do what, and, uh, how we're going to measure those results. And we just have to decide if, seven o'clock, is that the preferred time?
It's the day weekend, hot as well.
Twenty-eighth, it's a Wednesday, two days after our next Select Board meeting. So, a couple of extra pies might be necessary.
I assume this will be one of the meetings that come?
Yeah, and I think most of it's going to, they're going to immediately probably go into executive session, but it, we still have to warn it.
I, I had a couple of things, John. The same thing from the last meeting, I'm getting old and I forgot what the response was. Was it the REC Commission's idea or vote, or how did it all go down with Hubbardon paying a non? Can you refresh my memory on that, please?
Um, it was something that got from the REC Commission on, and not, not as an official vote. My understanding was that it was something that was discussed amongst the REC Commission. They didn't take it as a, you know, it wasn't in an official meeting or anything like that. It was just something that, uh, they had been discussing over time, and since the, you know, the division in the school, it's not kind of brought it to, or product, and that's where.
So, they agreed at a meeting, that's what they were going to do, is that, I mean, I'm just trying to?
I don't know necessarily, that's what I'm getting at, I don't know necessarily it was a full discussion at a meeting. I think it was the discussion, I think it was kind of the consensus of Martha and Martha, and that was the decision that was made.
Okay, so, when I, when I get back to this Hubbardon resident that contacted me, I'm going to tell her she needs to speak to Martha, if she has anything, anything further.
Right.
Okay, okay, that's, that's.
I mean, at the last meeting, I think it got support from the board as well.
Okay.
As I recall, you folks were in support of it as well, so.
We did, we decided there was either resident or non-resident.
Yep, yep, I was here for that, I remember that. I don't necessarily agree with it, but it's here nor there. Um, the other thing, John, I was approached by a relative of mine, that she thinks that we need to do away with that albatross of a thing you have down in Dewey Field, that jungle gym, whatever you want to call it. She thinks that needs to go away, and we need to seriously think about getting regular younger kids' equipment down there. I don't know what your thoughts are.
I don't disagree, I mean, I've just finished ripping out all the Redwood ties and, uh, the rod, holding it down in, some electrical stuff.
Okay.
So, and we do have a little bit of money set aside specifically allocated to that, Mike, I think it's like seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars.
Nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Oh, just like, yeah.
For, establish a REC fund to be used for capital improvements of our REC department, but it's designated for Dewey Field playground equipment.
Perfect.
I don't think you're going to build much for seven, nine-seventy-five.
It's definitely an old albatross, and I found the cement pad for the old Wheel of Death that was down there before as well, and that's still in the ground. The Wheel of Death is gone.
My, my quick thinking was, we're going to have to do something with ARPA money pretty quick, and if we've got.
There's money in there, there's, there's twenty thou- eighteen thousand dollars for Dewey, or Fields in the ARPA.
It is already.
Yeah. Okay. The board has to decide whether they want to go that route with it, but it was something as a placeholder to put in there.
Okay, I would think that would get us.
I can start looking at designs and stuff and get some numbers to go, at least, to consider.
That's exactly what I was going to ask you next, thank you, thank you.
Okay, okay.
I've got some pictures of stuff that I saw up in Maine, I'll share them with you , too.
Yeah, good stuff.
Yeah, all right.
You can fry an egg on the, um, and kids' legs on the slide when it heats up in the sun.
I've got, I've got a question on something about a piece of paper that was being passed out for a Crystal Beach capital improvement plan. Can you tell me where that came from?
It came from myself, and, well, I assisted Josh Ferguson on it. It was something that I was approached on, um, before the Lake Bomazene Association meeting, scheduled that they came and rented the, um, building for, uh, their annual event, and it was part of a discussion I had with one of their members, uh, interested in, um, donating to a, uh, not any particular fund, we actually just, the initial discussions involved Dewey Field and the recreational facility, and then somehow it got towards the Lake Bomazene Association meeting, it was more directed around Sail Camp, and so that's where that came from. And that is just a initial, um, vision on what possibilities might be for Crystal Beach building placement.
Okay, so, it reads like we're soliciting investors, is how that pamphlet reads.
Right.
And that's something that the town probably shouldn't do, is look for investors. I mean, donors is one thing, but investment is different, and a two-story building down there, when we still need to pay for the village school? I mean, I've got some angry taxpayers that were coming up and questioning it.
Right, right, well, it wouldn't involve, um, taxpayer money, if it was a charitable.
It will involve taxpayer money for upkeep and stuff down the road.
It very well may be, um, and, um, I think that, uh, I'm not sure, what, what, what is, so that's the extent of your, your personal concerns with it? Is that the, is that the extent of it?
Yeah, my personal concerns are, we need to get the village school taken care of before we start building other facilities in town.
Right.
It's a hard sell to the taxpayers for that building down there for the REC department, and now we're talking some major overhauls around.
So, I think that the, uh...
And the fact that we, I was blindsided by this, and the Select Board had never seen it, and it's got Castleton Recreation Department on it, and it's nothing that came through here.
Well, then, I guess that would be all my responsibility and, um, my mistake, and if, uh, I think that one of the things that I'd go back to when I started with the job was that, uh, there was an issue of potable water at the Crystal Beach that came up, and we discussed the use of ARPA funds to be able to solve that issue, and that issue didn't get taken care of. And I think personally, having become more and more familiar with the facilities at Crystal Beach, that the town is making, um, significant errors in their utilization of that facility. I think it could be a huge asset to the town of Castleton right now, but that, the Band-Aid approach to Crystal Beach over the years, which you aren't responsible for, it's the legacy of the Select Board and the Recreation Commission over the years, that's where I'm dealing with personally on a day-to-day basis. Um, that's, that piece of literature and that endeavor is towards the betterment of the town of Castleton and bringing in revenue through that piece of property, which is an underused, uh, resource for the town of Castleton. There's no other way to look at that two or three million dollar piece of property sitting on Cris- on Lake Bomazene, under the control of the town of Castleton, and, you know, we're unable to put potable water to it. So, when you look at that holistically, um, I think that the town needs to think bigger about that, and that is one of the, I mean, the, the recreation facility in and of itself is a whole nother matter. The fact that you have that property and it's a town-owned entity on Lake Bomazene, I think personally is, you know, is an underused, uh, resource for the town of Castleton, and that's where that motivation comes from, to be able to improve that facility.
I don't, I'm going to speak first, Barry.
I think, I already, I think I already spoke with somebody about this. I thought this message would then make clear to the members of the board, I didn't think that it was going to be coming up.
That's all I was going to say, is when you got these plans or thoughts, just come to the Select Board first before it gets out to the public, because when we get blindsided, like Rob just said, that, 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 that just can't happen. We've been down the road in the last month or two.
I didn't expect this blind sight to know. So, I, I spoke with your, I spoke with the chair on it, and the town manager, and so.
We need to know first before the general public does, that's all, just what you're up to.
And that was established.
When I talked to Dick, um, after I talked to John, he was going to reach out and try to talk to the Select Board members, I know he wanted vacation, so maybe it just didn't happen.
All right, I mean, this is the second or third time that this kind of same thing has happened in the last couple of months, and it, it can't happen, it just can't. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Um, two things I just wanted to mention. I don't doubt that that facility could be used to a higher level, but I don't think it's really been a Band-Aid approach over the last decades. Until recently, the town has not had a big appetite for recreation spending, and, and that beach has been maintained through volunteer love for decades on very, very little money. You know, it's only open twelve weeks a year. Um, that's, living in Vermont, we've got twelve weeks of summer. So, I really appreciate you thinking about what it could be in the future, but, um, it has been lovingly maintained for no money by a few dedicated people for decades. Um, and we're at a point now where we're trying to make a go of the old village school as a REC center, and I think if we can create value in that for the community, you'd see a big change in whether people were willing to invest more money in Crystal Beach, but I think we need to really focus on that right now. We're going to use it or lose it really quickly.
Roy, did you have it? Go ahead, Mike.
I've got two questions. Do you know the amount yet on the adventure camp deficit?
Do I know? No, our final payroll went in this morning, so.
On the sailing program, uh, do you know whether that ran as a plus or a deficit?
Very much so, it's a, um, very little, it's all volunteer run, and it's a, it's a moneymaker in terms of, you know, twenty-eight hundred dollars in revenue and probably less than a thousand dollars in expenses. It's all volunteer run, volunteer boats, volunteer fuel, volunteer time, it's a payroll that really dictates the adventure camp spending, adventures.
Did Allison hear all that? I could barely hear Roy, I just want to make sure Allison got all that.
Allison, did you, did you hear Roy Newton?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Alexander? Okay, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Oh.
The executives, or the, the meeting on the twenty-eighth is going to be mostly executive session, why?
Personnel matters.
This Dash Aquatic Diving Services, half or full day, you've got to talk to that, Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Please.
I can try to. Well, I, I'm the only one that probably can, because I'm the one that's been dealing with it, but.
Thank you.
So, a couple of years ago, the history of it, a couple of years ago, um, I had approached the board about using some of the reserve money that we had, and specifically states, just as a reminder, weed harvesting and, or, and lake-related, and there's sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in that account right now. So, a couple of years ago, I asked the board to approve some money to pull some, hand-pull some weeds out in the swim area, and to do some bank restoration along Sucker Brook, which included trying to create some fishing spots, using some large flat rocks, and, uh, using Hillary Solomon's resources from the Polton Meadowie Natural Resources Conservation District, um, to plant, do some plantings, and with the stipulation that it wasn't going to become wall-to-wall, uh, vegetation, so kids couldn't actively fish there and have some fun without catching some trees. So, they did do that, and they did the, the weed harvesting, and so, it's been a couple of years, so I went up to the beach and asked the, the staff where they were at with this, um, like, what the problem area is, and the big problem area was the boat, or the, where the sailboats are. The last report I got was that the lily pads and some of that stuff was thick enough where as the boats, sailboats were coming in, the rudder and stuff like that were, was catching on, on the stuff and slowing them down, or stopping them. So, I said, okay, let's see what the cost would be to, to do some weed harvesting, and so I started off with, um, a business, Beck Sinclair is the owner, um, and I asked him what it would cost to do Dash, the diving assisted suction harvesting, or hand-pulling, and, uh, went back and forth with Rob today, um, he had some concerns on permitting, so I reached back out to, uh, to Beck, and I reached out to Owen Reed from A and R, and his answer to me was, unless they, to use Dash, they'd have to get written permission from either the Lake Bomazene Preservation and Trust, or the town of Hubbardon, in this case, probably the LBD.
PT.
PT, um, to work under their permit, and it's only for the milfoils, not for, uh, lily pads. So, I said, well, what's needed for hand-pulling? And he said, hand-pulling is exempt, and a permit's not needed, uh, for, if you're hand-pulling. And I said, what about lily pads? And he said, same thing, no permit needed, uh, for that. So, that small area in front of the sailboat, um, launch, where they moored them, and the, and the new docks in there, or stairway, um, I asked him for a quote to do that, for both, and I asked him to do a quote for hand-pulling at the, just on the edge of the swim area, because it's starting to creep into that again, um, and I didn't see it on, when he originally sent this, I didn't see it on there, um, because it was eight hours, two divers for four hours each, so I just wanted to make sure that the eight hundred included the, did it include the swim area or not include the swim area? And my conversation with him, I'm assuming it did not, based on our conversation. So, he, he sent me two proposals, they're both one-on-one, so one should be one-on-two, and I'm just going to kind of arbitrarily pick one and say, the lily pad one, hand-pulling lily pads, we'll just make that number two.
That's one-on-two?
Yeah, and I'll have him officially change it, but.
Okay.
So, this would get us to a point where they'd hand-pulled this fall, and as we, because they can't dat- do Dash until one July, earliest, and I don't think it needs Dash anyway, um, and we, he could come back at a, a rate, I'd have to get a new rate for him. And we...he could come back at a rate...I'd have to get a new rate for him for what it would cost to kind of come back in the spring and take anything away that's maybe regrown or they missed, because they can't touch the native species. It's only the Eurasian milfoil and/or the lily pads, if that's the route you go. Lily pads are kind of overgrowing the area. That's what they were complaining about mostly. So if the board would consider this, it's sixteen hundred dollars for eight hours worth of work removing milfoil and another eight hours worth of work pulling the...hand-pulling the lily pads. I learned more about lily pads today than I ever want to know again, but this is before you to clean up that area, and then I'd come back in the spring once we get an assessment of where they're at to see if it's needed or not. If it's not needed, obviously we don't do it, but if there's stuff they missed or it's growing, and I also would come back with you for the swim area. I don't have that one, because I'm only assuming that it does not include this. It'd be a bonus if it did, but I think he's gonna come back and tell me it's gonna be one or two hours to hand-pull along the swim area, because that's what we talked about while I was standing there looking at the job of them.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I thought lily pads were protected.
That...in my learning today of lily pads, that was not.
You can hand-pull them. You can't do anything else with them.
So it's one spot there that's kind of...kind of like we're in the path of where the navigation lane for the sailboats?
It's probably half the size of this building, or this room anyway.
Well, they do take over that one in Brandon. All it is is lily pads near that.
Walk across there, right? If you had to, yeah. So I'm 100% for Dash and hand-pulling and stuff like that, but my question is, is it worth doing it for what little bit is left in the year just to have to do it over again in the spring?
So I asked that question. We did discuss that, and he said that if we pull it this late and later in the year like this, that by springtime, there shouldn't be a lot of regrowth, but there may be things that they missed and come back in.
I mean, a lot of it'll die off through the winter anyway, so in the spring early, there won't be anything anyway, so it would be less to pull in the springtime.
We talked about both ways, whether we wait and do it all in the spring, because he'd have to basically do it before July 1st, because then when he starts with Dash, it gets a little bit busier. So it could happen...I'm not sure when milfoil hits its growth peak, sometime before 1 July or not, but I'm not passionate either way. I'd love to see it started and not like delayed and get it done and come back and clean up this spring. That's my personal preference, but I don't know if there's a scientific answer to it all.
Sure.
And he's available.
And the money's available?
Sixteen thousand five hundred's available. So this...and it's really limited on what this can be used for, so, you know, if we look at this as...and it doesn't replenish itself. The only thing it does is builds interest. Like, we're talking like a couple hundred...two hundred fifty dollars a year.
So full disclosure, Beck is a good friend of mine. Should I recuse myself from this conversation?
Are you personally gonna gain from this?
No.
Are you getting a kickback, Mark?
He's gonna give me all the lily pads.
Yeah.
It should be a conflict, as far as the conflict of interest policy goes, if you're not...there's no personal gain for you or your family monetarily or else-wise.
So I've seen the work...Owen Teeter ran this business before Beck did, and I've seen the work that they've done, and it does seem like where they work, there's less the next year. I don't have any scientific evidence for that, just anecdotally.
He said...he told me that, and even in the swim area, if they clear it back next year, there'll just be less there. There'll be native species there, because they can't touch those. But as we...you know, we got sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, so every couple of years, there's money enough to keep this going where, you know, the swim area would be cleaned up and the sailboat area, because that's...talking with Joe Mark and John Alexander, they want to grow this program, so it's not gonna go...it's not like we're gonna spend this money and then next year, there's no sail camp. I think it's gonna be...it's only gonna grow.
That swimming area certainly gets a lot of use. It'd be nice to...you know, a lot of local people enjoy that. It'd be nice to keep that up the best we can.
Absolutely. Well, where the line or the buoys are right now, for an adult male, it comes up to about like your belly, and I'm not sure what's beyond it in the depths, the murky depths of Lake Bomazin, but it...I mean, it could be something that eventually, if we clear it back and clear it back enough to get it a little bit deeper where people can, you know, get above their ankle level with it.
Did you want to touch on where this money originated from, Mike?
Yeah, it was a balance of the original weed harvesting reserve and sale of the weed harvesters, plus accumulated interest.
Thank you. Okay. What's the board's pleasure? Don't all speak at once.
I mean, the money's there, if you think it's worthwhile doing it once now and once in the spring again.
Well, might not have to do it in the spring. I just asked him to assess it in the spring to see what, you know, if we got this big growth back, that they might have to do something, but if there's not a lot of growth, I mean, I think every two years, it looks like this could be a feasible program, and there's money to sustain it for a while. Plus, Sucker Bank...or Sucker Brook Bank, every time we get big storms, it's really taking a beating, and I want to make sure that we have some money there that if we have to make repairs and stabilize that bank, that we have some money left in that as well.
I'd make a motion that we do this as long as we have record-keeping, so from year to year, we can say, hey, this was successful, or does anybody remember how that worked out? You know, I think if we're gonna spend this money, we need to be really good stewards of the money and see that we're getting value.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we can keep track that we're not paying...I'm just picking a number here, but eight hours every single time he goes out, then we know that's what it's gonna be.
And the problem's not better.
Yeah.
Then we're not gaining. You know, we need to see measurable results from year to year.
We have a little experience with that. We've had weeds in front of our house for years, and I think Rob can tell you, I'd weed rake regularly, or I did, and year after year after year, it got less and less and less, and right now we have none.
Because you were persistent with it.
I was very.
For how many years, do you think?
A lot.
Couple decades.
Rob wasn't born yet.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Would you be willing to go rake our weeds?
The water's only this deep. He just said that.
Well, I was thinking I could go pull it.
Well, one of the things that got put into that, and I'm really gonna...I'm digressing and I'll make it quick. That Brettley program I keep telling you about that the board, well, we're in that stage now where it's starting to load the assessments up into it, and Crystal Beach is part of that assessment. So it's easy to add this as a component of that, to say it was done this date, this how many hours it was, and how much we spent, and then we can assess that every year and say, is it working or not working? And there'd be historical records to show it, too.
Sure, sure.
I would make a motion.
You made the motion, are you? Yes?
No, I said I would, but I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we hire Sinclair Commercial Diving Services to complete the scope of work on Proposal 101 and 102, with the understanding that the town manager's going to keep records of when this happens, so we can measure results from year to year.
Can you give me a dollar amount on that? Did you say that?
For a total of sixteen hundred dollars.
Want to get a second on that?
I'll second it up.
Thank you. Any more discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. I guess we've got a couple...I don't know what they are here. Tobacco substitute endorsement for C.O. Grocers Group LLC and...
Where's that at? Green Mountain Market? Doing business as Green Mountain Market?
I think that's the Jiffy Mart. The old Jiffy.
It says on here someplace, isn't it, in the back page? It tells you're doing business as...I thought I saw it.
What's the address?
Help me out here. Well, this page.
Dallas, Texas?
111 Vermont 30.
111 Vermont 30 Castle Corners, is that?
That's Castle Corners, I know.
That's the corner store, right? Green Mountain Market.
178...
Yeah, I don't...
It says Old Jiffy Mart.
Old Jiffy Mart, okay. So it's not the corner store. All right. You want to tackle this, Mr. Steele? You're pretty good at this. You want to do one first and then we'll do the other one?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the tobacco substitute endorsement for...what is it? C.O. Grocers Group LLC doing business as Green Mountain Market number 104.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
You know, I'm so opposed to tobacco products and tobacco substitute products being sold in the community at all, but I guess if they meet the criteria, we have to approve the permit. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. We don't have any choice.
What are you talking about? Tobacco substitutes?
I think maybe the vape. I think...am I wrong when I say that? Is it the vaping?
I'm assuming that that's what it is. I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't say on here.
It doesn't say cannabis substitute, so.
Stuff that you see kids smoking, walking down the street.
Yeah, they all...they all sell it. They all sell it.
Everybody sells that stuff now. You could always abstain, Mark, from the vote.
I'm going to abstain, because I'm really opposed to it.
Fair enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Mark abstained. I'm abstaining. I don't think that I have the right to oppose it, because I don't have grounds to oppose this store compared to any others.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Motion passes. Three to one, three to...three to zero, right? Yep, okay. All right. You want to tackle this next one, Rob? I'll give you a second to read it or whatever. First-class liquor license, right?
I would make a motion to approve the first-class liquor license for Francis and Porter LLC doing business as the Bomazin Diner.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, four to zero. Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm Sean Meyer. This is my wife, Sam, and we're doing Bomazin Diner. And so you present for it, and just to let y'all know, we use it in utmost respect, and we all invite you to support us in our endeavor. Francis and Porter LLC is our children. We're doing this for them. We have four R. A. Week jobs, but we're doing this to build better future for them, so thank you all.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
Sean Meyer.
Nice to meet you. Glad to have you guys doing business in town.
We've counted since the last couple of years.
Sean, when are you there?
Come again?
When will you be at the store or at the diner?
I'm actually at the store at the restaurant on Saturdays and Sundays, and my wife will be there. She has a variable schedule, because she works at Royal Regional Melting Center, and so we'll be there as often as we possibly can be.
Okay. I just want to come and say hi, though, so.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And have breakfast.
Yeah, absolutely. Come on in. Come on in.
And how do you spell your last name?
M.Y.H.R.U.
Did you just hear that, Allison?
Yes, got it.
Okay, thank you.
Charge him double, eats a lot.
Just make enough, that's all I ask.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, folks. Nice to meet you, folks.
And best of luck. It's really nice to have you doing business in town.
Thank you so much.
Oh, boy. Updated encroachment application for acceptance. You got me on this, Mr. Jones. I don't know.
Quick history is, I found out that there was a company tearing up...not tearing up, retract that. Strike that from the record. Doing work on Moscow Road to put in cable or fiber as part of that last mile, and I didn't...I wasn't aware of it, what they were doing. They were in the road, and so I kind of halted everything and said, I don't have a bond, I don't have a contract, I have nothing, and if something happens to this road, who's gonna be responsible for it? So I worked with the company engineer, and I told them we need to have a contract and we need a $5,000 bond that state we keep it for a year. And that way, if anything happens to the road, there's some money there. So that's how it started, and so I looked back at the application and it needed some work, so I ended up getting one from Pittsburgh. They sent me theirs, and we...I asked Jeff to look at it and make what his recommendations are, and this is the product. What...mine is, there is something on there where it says application fee $100, and it says $1,000 bond or check. It should be $5,000. So if you do approve this...
We have to make that change?
Make that change, yeah. $1,000 for...if they damage that road, they ain't gonna go very far.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah. That's a load of stone and some couple of hours on a grader, probably. So this is the product that if anybody's going to dig in our roadway, put utilities in, in the right-of-way, culverts underneath the road, there are standards that they have to meet to make sure that it protects the road. And I say it with a little bit of passion, because we got pulled a slickie on us up at Johnson Spooner, that house that's on the corner there. They were supposed to encase that in concrete or double-walled pipe, and the guy paid the $5,000, did what they wanted, and left. Never...and the road's settled there, there's still a little hump there, so that's what happens when you don't have everything in place, and we still have their $5,000 that we deposited, and they never...nobody's ever come back for it. So...but that's the kind of stuff that can happen. So the other thing was burial, and it hits it twice in here, I think. It was a burial tape, so when they're digging, you come to that first before we dig and pop a hole in our sewer line or, you know, something like that. So this is what the final product was, to come back before the Select Board and get your approval to change the application. I don't know if I really need it, to be honest with you, but I always like to try to keep you guys informed, or guys and gals informed, so this is what we're recommending. So if you agree with it, then that'd be better for us. That way, if there's ever a question on it, you've seen it, you've had a voice on it.
I would think the application fee should be higher.
I...we looked at that, too.
This is gonna require Jeff going up at least twice to make sure the work's being completed correctly?
Yeah. I wouldn't argue with a higher...
He doesn't have any extra time, as it is.
No.
I would think that the application fee should be at least 500, if not 1,000, to make sure that we have good oversight.
I think I agree with the whole sentiment. I'm not sure if I agree, Mark, or not that I don't. I think I wouldn't agree with the higher amount, because there's some smaller companies that are in...I think the bond covers that. Jeff's wages for four hours, let's say if we had invested in it, is 250 bucks.
So what about the work he's not getting done?
And we give the bond back if everything's good, so that...he only made $100 for that four hours of going up and screwing around, if they did the job correctly.
I'm just...I'm just bringing the voice to you. You guys decide how you want to prove it. I'm just...
What's your recommendation, Mr. Jones? 250, or you want to go with 500? You don't want to go 1,000, I heard that.
No. I'm thinking something like 3 to 350, maybe.
What can you guys do, settle on?
It's a big jump, that's all. I mean, we've been...
I wouldn't go 1,000, yeah.
We just recently updated some of the other permit applications, because they were way under, and I think we only went like from 50 bucks to 100 bucks or 150 bucks. So I think that jumping from 100 to 350 is a pretty sizable jump, in my opinion only.
Would you settle for that, Mr. Brown, 350?
I know if you called Nicole Kesselring and said, hey, can you come over and make sure this is correct before they bury it, it'd be 1,000. So I'd rather see 500, but...which everybody, you know...
I would agree with the 500. I mean...
Make a motion.
I don't think that we should lose money because somebody wants to put a utility or a water line or something in the road.
Oh, 500 to this company, Consolidated Communications, to put that money they're making on that's probably nothing.
That's what I mean, and so why should we...why should the Town of Castleton lose money on that by sending Jeff up there three or four times, or you had to go up there and deal with it now and...
Somebody that understands road construction has to do it.
Okay, I'm sold on 500.
Okay.
He just wants to get moving here. He wants to go home early.
I wanted to see you twist his arm a little bit more.
I don't think a big company's going to say, I, I can't pay $500. It might be some smaller people, but I know, I guess what? They're going to, they're going to probably roll it into their cost to their customer anyways.
That's all they would have to do, but we have to eat it anyway, so.
So, I, I'll.
Should be done correctly, yeah. Sets a serious tone to it. All right. I make a motion, we approve the encroachment application with the, uh, change of a $500 application fee and a $5,000 bond or check.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Crush Stone Bid Award.
It should be a recommendation in your, like, I handed out earlier from Jeff.
I did see that.
I got buried here.
Yep. Yep. I saw that, right here.
I will tell you that he put a lot of effort into looking at how we, how we've done business and, uh, how it's, what the repercussions are, uh, the results on our roads, and this, uh, going on two years now, we've started using stone more than just gravel. We found that gravel didn't solve the stability issues in the road, and, um, so, as Jeff has been gone, has been going through more training and all of his research with other towns and stuff, um, we started using more stone. As, and not slate, we went away from slate into stone. Slate, after it breaks down, turns into clay, or breaks down into clay, and it's not, it's not a good material to have on a, on a gravel road. It's, it's, um, it's part of the problems that we've had. That's why when we do our, our crushing of the gravel, we avoid clay being put into that gravel, uh, because that, our pit has a lot of clay in it. Um, and over the years, we've, I think the town is, I say the town. I don't, I'm not putting a point of finger at anybody, just, I think over the years that the, the product that we've been putting down on the roads has caused a lot of the problems because there's so much clay in it. And we're just kind of reaping that, uh, those errors in judgment, um, on, because it was cheaper. That was, it was, I think it was more of a money issue than it was the product issue and the end result product, um, that we get out of it. So that's why Jeff wants the stone. He kind of explained to you in here on mud season, the different depths of the ruts and what size stone we'd use, and the, how we pay for this. This is, because this is not something that we historically have budgeted for. But as we, we're looking at, um, buying less winter sand and putting more stone in that sand, um, that, because that's the stuff that's going to build the base in the roads as it, it gets compacted in there, and using chloride, that we're going to spend less on, we're going to spend less on buying the, as much, we're not going to buy as much sand, winter sand, and that savings we sat down and figured out could pay for the stone. So, we're not, we're not really adding to the budget by doing this, we're just changing our methodology.
We're going to haul all three ourselves. Michael, is that what I read here?
Yeah, talking to him today, you know, it's, Florence is closer, uh, it's, it costs more money, but, and, and the, the trucking and the time that our, the limited time that we already have with our crew, it'll, it'll reduce the truck, the windshield time. Going, you can go farther to pick it up.
Okay, but we're going to haul it ourselves?
Yeah.
That was, okay.
That's what, that's what he's recommending.
Okay, so we're.
Because of the price difference.
We're going to, yeah, because we're going to go with the second amount on every one of these. It's a board's pleasure.
He's still going to be able to get all his work done and do this trucking? It's not going to mean that some of our summer maintenance doesn't get done?
He, so we, we have, um, thank God, we've got a couple extra bodies that, uh, I say bodies, good employees, um, that are filling in up there helping, so, he's planned this in, so it's not going to, it's not going to throw us back. It's, it'll probably throw us back a day or two, but it's, it's not going to be catastrophic. Our, our grant projects will be done, and the culverts that we need to change will get done, the grading will still happen. So, uh, yeah, there's a, there's a little sacrifice on probably a day and a half, but.
We got places to store all this stuff up there?
Yeah, they cleared up top, um, the pit to establish our piles and of different materials.
Okay.
So, we had to move some stuff around because we were getting, we thought we were getting ready for crushing. And the company that we were, that we've been dealing with has now come back and said basically, they want $15,000 to clear some overburden. And it's, it's really because it, they don't want to do it, and they're saying there's too much clay in it.
Okay.
So, we've, we've made space anyway, so we have enough spot to set this and, uh, position it, so it's not going to get mixed in with other things or drove, driven over.
Okay. Are we going to haul all this all at once? I mean, we're going to do the, you know, the three-quarter inch day or two, and then, are we going to do it all together?
He said what he wants to do is get it all done and knocked out so that we can, once we're done, we move on to the next project, unless there's an emergency that comes up in between. Like, if we have a storm, we got to go out and do some repair of road or something like that.
Okay, did you guys figure out, are we talking a week of hauling? Are we talking two weeks of hauling?
I think he said three days.
Three days?
I think he said three days.
To haul all this?
Yeah, there's like turn and burn all 10-hour days.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? Yeah, Robert, wait a minute.
Do we have the equipment to haul it right now?
Yeah, we, we've got the two, we've got the two tandems, um, that are fully operational and, um, and the single axle, so. It's almost a waste of money to send a single axle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if we got a driver, and they're not, you know, they, they can't do something else, like when they go grade, they need two people out there to grade. So, manpower-wise, it makes more sense to even, to use a single axle if we have to, because they're not going to be grading or doing something else anyway.
Just as long as we're not down trucks right now, that.
No, we're good right now.
Any more questions?
I think this plan makes perfect sense. The dirt roads are definitely in better shape the last, this year than they were five years ago. And you can see the quality of stone they've been using, and the roads are much better.
And that, so, thank you, Mark, for the segue. So, that gravel road in your, in your packet, this is what, um, we've come up with for, um, going forward. I did put it in, it's not on the agenda for tonight, um, because we were still working on it at the end of last week. Uh, but this is what we would come back to the board with, um, as our plan, which that feeds into that plan. So, so Jeff's plan was to, as we do this work on these roads, that we're doing every best practice that we can to make them better and stable and last longer, and less dusty.
Killington and Pyco have done that for years. They stopped using sand 10 years ago. And used crushed stone, and I talked to them about it, and we started doing that at work because we have to sand the whole yard a couple times a week. Sand, we, now we use crushed stone. And then in the springtime, you don't have that muck. It's just ready to go.
Makes sense.
Makes really good sense.
Okay.
The only thing I would comment, looking at this, is that next year, maybe he would want to look into what it would cost to hire outside contractors to truck that, so our crew wasn't tied up. I know they, they're short on time getting all their summer work done, and you see all these sub guys out there with dump trucks.
Because, well, he, he did ask for, I'm not sure if this answered your question, Mark, but, uh, he did ask on our, on the bid forms behind here, what it would cost to have it hauled to us, or what, and the cost, what it would, for us to pick it up. So there, he did do that, and.
But if we picked it up with subcontractor trucks?
Oh, with trucks, oh, okay. With somebody else's equipment?
And somebody else's driver.
Okay.
Yeah, so we hired, um, Gary Bowen or something to haul it for.
Yeah, like when Pike faves, they've got some of their trucks, but most of them are subs.
Yeah, people that are just looking to put some miles on their trucks.
Yeah, I don't know how much, I don't know who would be hauling it for the company. I'm looking at Pike Industries right now, and it says it was $39.22 per cubic yard delivered, and $20 a cubic yard, $20, I think, $26 or $20 again, and 30 cents. So that, he did ask that, but I don't know who they're asking to haul.
Subcontracted out to somebody else, too, so they're going to get a cut and pay the other guy, so.
Almost double.
We'd have to look at what, what would it cost, according to, if I'm following what you're saying, Mark, because we would hire, we would see what it costs to hire somebody out, not Pike Industries hiring somebody out.
Versus our labor hours to send somebody.
Just something to think of for next year. So you need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
So, I would make a motion to approve Florence Stone for the three-quarter inch crushed zone at a price of $1,250 a ton for a total of $15,750.
Rob, can you put the, can you put the total ton in there so we don't have to figure it out now? Can you put?
Oh, yeah, 12, 1,260 tons, give or take.
Perfect. Okay.
And I would, do we have to do one motion for all of them, or can we split it up?
We're doing one motion for all of them.
Okay. And Florence Stone for half-inch crushed stone, 1,300 tons, give or take, at $15 a ton for a total of $19,500. And Florence Stone for one and a half inch crushed stone for 1,230 yards, give or take, for 1150 a yard, or a ton, sorry, at $14,145.
Do I have a second? Oh, yeah.
I think what he, I think he said 1,230 yards.
He did.
At the first.
Yeah, I, 1,230 tons, give or take, at 1150 a ton for a total of $14,145.
Do I have a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, sorry. I should have waited. I'm sorry. I see you studying over there.
So we're comparing cubic yards to tons.
Yeah, so I tried to get them all bid in cubic yards, and one of them refused to bid in that, and so Jeff was trying to convert. Actually, I think, I take that back. Jeff was converting, but when Karen did this sheet, um, she said that she converted the cubic yards to tons, or vice versa, whatever they gave. I, I wanted it in cubic yards, is what I wanted it in.
So roughly, a cubic yard of material is a ton, give or take.
A little bit.
400 pounds.
Yep, yep.
A ton of sand weighs a lot more than a ton of big rock, because there's no air. Just trying to make sure that we're still getting the, the best price.
Well, it's by weight, so a ton is, is going to be a ton.
Ton is a ton, that's easy enough.
Cubic yards could be, when they load it, if it's got a lot of space in it, um, that could be false, um, that way, so.
You're right.
We should be making out better.
Ton's a more accurate way to buy it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure I'm good to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Four to zero.
Thank you.
Florence Stone. Did you say we're going to talk about this at the next meeting?
Yes. We were waiting to see what the board approved, the, the stone stuff, because that's going to feed into that, um, that, that thing. I'm going to have to be at the next meeting because I think that's the meeting we wanted, you guys wanted to have, just, uh.
Going to discuss that. Yeah.
Well, you ready to vote on it tonight?
I am, and I'm with the rest of them.
The gravel road maintenance plan?
Oh.
Not on the agenda, but.
Um, estimate for mower repairs, Mike? Yeah. You warned me about this.
Yeah, I did. So, we're back to talking about the new Holland tractor and its infamous over-the-rail mower. So, um, it was being used and the blades abruptly stopped turning. And what happened is the, the spindle that comes at the top, the motor that spins the blade that goes down into the housing, the, the teeth are all worn off it. And I didn't take much, it, I think over the years, abrupt stops on anything like that is bad for it. And we've hit a lot of stuff with that thing, because you're mowing along in brush and you hit something you don't know is there, and it comes to an abrupt stop. And so it's probably, that's the demise of it, um, but the, uh, it was, that's, that wasn't the case when it, when it happened, but, um, it's now non-mission capable, um, that we looked at whether fabricating the, the parts or going through the dealer to get them, and, in the end, it wasn't much cheaper. So, to fix the mower part of it, um, is, we need that to get it, keep it going. To, now the joystick, which is now malfunctioning again, so it just goes up in the air and extends. They came and looked at it, they did some work on it, they tested it and said it's not these components, so it's got to be something in the joystick part of it, and, um, they're checking to see if it's under warranty, because it might be over six months.
They just replaced it?
Yeah, but we never used it, you know, because it went through winter, and now it has very little hours on it since we fixed it, and now it's not working. So, we're fighting with them to make sure they honor it, because they can see that we didn't put any hours on the darn thing. And, um, but, so I had a, a conversation with Jeff and our mechanic, Evan, how to get, how to fight through this. One thing is, if we don't fix it, we live with what it is right now, because it's probably too late in the year to, to rent anything, but we might be able to borrow one from another town. But again, if we break theirs and we fix theirs, and they get something new. Or, and when I say don't fix it, and then look at just renting this tractor's out, because you have to almost start a year out to get on a calendar and schedule. We used to do that, like, four years ago, um, we would rent the equipment twice a summer and not have to own it. But the cost of it started getting so high that Paul Egan came to me and said, it's cheaper to buy a damn tractor and do it ourselves. And so that's where, that's where, how we went about it, and we purchased this one from the city of Albany, and it's just had its, it was old when we bought it. I think we're just getting all the gremlins with it right now, that, and working all the bugs out of it, because it's a 2001 or something like that. It's an old tractor. I mean, it doesn't look, no, it looked, if you look at the tractor, it's like new. But it's definitely, you know, pretty old, but, um, so the, the choice is fix it and let's get, keep going and run it, keep running it, um, if we can get the, the joystick thing solved. Because all total, it's going to be $9,213.44, and that's not counting the joystick.
What's this 12,365 that's on the back page?
Yeah, he said, it explains, well, it says, um, it counts the parts. There's, there was an explanation in there, I read it. In that 9,000-something, and that, that quote included the parts, I think is how it read. Original parts, I'm reading it right now. Section one is to rebuild old part. Labor and parts costs make swapping out cheaper option. Updated parts will be current production parts. Uh, hydraulic motor has to be updated as parts are no longer available for that as well. So taking the consideration with the parts and labor, I think, how it read, I think it's on the back page, it was only 9,000 something.
Yeah, I don't know. I just keep seeing a quote of 12,365 on both sheets. Backside says pay this amount, 12,365. The quote part says total 12,365.
I'm trying to find it. I read, I know I read it. Now, if it was in the email, if it was on the body of this.
You don't see a 9,000 there anywhere, do you? I didn't either, do I? I mean, I see where it says remove section one from the total cost.
Yeah, so section one was.
So that's 540, 192733.
Yeah, and 107.
And 107. Does that get us to the 9,200?
I'll tell you in a second. So we're starting off with 12,365, 13.
What should we pay for the tractor, do you remember?
Yeah, that's what it comes out to, is 970, 979080.
I got 921344.
Maybe I missed something.
I think our decision is whether we rebuild what we have or we buy the complete assembly. Isn't that the deal?
Pretty much. Is, does this thing come out of our vehicle replacement schedule, and we, we look at other options and not? Is, does this thing come out of our vehicle replacement schedule and we, we look at other options and not, and not, by not, and not fix it and sell it? And get what we can, the tractor's still probably got some value, the mower's not, it's, it's, it's pretty old and beat. Um, and, and then just rent. Um, mowers each year, but again, we've experienced it before that. If we don't get on it early, we don't get the timeframes that we want and, you know, mowing twice and, once in August and once September is not optimal. Um, we need to really get out before the fourth of July and then, you know, in the latter part of the summer, but, um. It also takes away the capability of the far sides of the banks where it reaches out now and can. It's not just next to the road, it's on that far bank where trees are growing out into the road and we, it can take, and cut the small, it's designed to be able to cut that small stuff and we would. We would have to do that. At other way, other means and I couldn't imagine the highway crew walking up and down thirty-eight miles.
So is the tractor the problem or has it always just been the mower part of it or they're not, can they not be separated and get a different mower? Does it sound like, I mean, do we wanna put ten thousand into the mower itself?
Yeah, that's the, the answer, to answer your question, they can be separated, the, most of the problems have been. With the mower right now, the hydraulics on the tractor have, have been a problem twice. Um, the hydraulic pump on the tractor, it's puked out fluid twice, um.
Well, we fixed that, right?
We fixed it, but they're, they're talking about now the mower, it said something about the hydraulics on here that had to be. Replaced because you can't get parts for it, is that?
You read that someplace, but I didn't.
Is that on the mower though?
I'm reading it. Hydraulic motor has to be updated. And I don't, I don't believe there's a hydraulic motor on the, on the, on the deck.
No.
It's just an arm and it's fed through hydraulics to turn everything, but I think the pump.
So we need to.
That's only fifty bucks.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I truly, I'm trying to separate myself from the emotions of this thing because I've lived it since we bought it and it's been nothing but a headache.
Well, yeah, I get that.
And so, but how to financially move forward as the best option is. Um, and, because there's a, it's gonna be a crap shoot, I guess we have to take a leap of faith that if we don't repair it and we just go into next year renting, we've gotta get. On someone's calendar and be able to rent the things, that's.
I'm kinda suspect of their diagnosis, so. They put a new joystick on it and now we've used it two months and the joystick is bad.
We really didn't get much.
I've had a lot of hydraulic equipment, I've never had a joystick go bad.
It wasn't two months.
No.
Pardon me?
We didn't use it two months.
No, it hasn't, it, it might be two months, but we haven't used it for, you know, it hasn't been operating for.
It would appear to me the first joystick we bought wasn't the problem.
Yeah, they, they went through, they showed me the components that they tested, they swapped things around, tested it and they said, it's not here.
That's not a diagnosis.
I, of all that.
Must be this.
What's that?
Must be this, right?
Well, I, I mean, the mechanic, I, I wasn't there, I didn't hear him, I, this was fed to me, is they, Evan showed me what they checked and said. That, none of this failed or, or caused the problem, so it has to be in the joystick.
So do we have two problems going on here, is there a hydraulic issue and the joystick issue?
I, I don't know, I, the hydraulic, I just read the hydraulic.
I think there's the spindle issue and the joystick issue.
But the hydra- but as far as the hydraulic motor goes, that's, I just read this, it's, that's not something I've just.
Yeah, I, I could need some more information on this, I think, before we.
Hold off till the next meeting.
And that's only fifty bucks, that's not a big deal, but. Well, fifty dollars is shop supplies, I think.
What?
Shop supplies, it says other charges, shop supplies. So it was fifty dollars to diagnose that the parts are no longer available. And that they should.
They don't have a hydraulic motor on here. I see the spindle and some fittings.
He was looking at the first one that says other charges, original parts no longer available, hydraulic motor has to be updated.
But I'm looking for a place on there where they, where they're charging us for a hydraulic motor or something.
Yeah, I don't see it, I think this, I think it's ninety-two hundred dollars to fix the spindle.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
So what's wrong with the hydraulic motor too? And the joystick?
Yeah, the joystick.
I don't have much faith in that, if they have, uh. Replaced the joystick and it's bad again, I've never heard of that.
Would you like me to wait and see what they say about the joystick, because that's kind of like, could be a determining factor?
I think we better.
Because they say that's bad and it's not covered by warranty, then I'm at the fight with them on the warranty part, but if we lose it, if we lose the argument.
And it's brand new.
Yeah, and because it's time, because six months has gone by or whatever the, you know, then we're stuck with a, a broken joystick that, so the mower can't work and the spindle's broken, doesn't work. I have no idea what's going on with the hydraulics.
I worked on a log skidder one time that had ridiculous electronics like this for a log skidder and there's not a lot for testing those things. It's pretty much if it doesn't work, like the manual was, check this, this and replace this, replace this, if that doesn't work, replace this. So.
But it, it was twelve thousand dollars plus the joystick, right?
Yeah.
If that's under warranty, is it worth putting into a forty, we paid forty thousand dollars for this tractor, I think is what we paid.
No, I would send it.
We, we've spent twenty-seven, twenty-nine thousand on it already.
So we got like sixty-nine thousand dollars.
But eventually you're gonna get to this point where like, what, what's left to. What's left to replace?
There's always something left to replace and it just usually gets more expensive.
But this, and, and looking at the, the vehicle replacement schedule, this wasn't scheduled to be replaced like five years. So, uh, we, we could live with it, putting money in this thing for five years and it's gonna, the money we put into it far exceeds the value of the damn thing.
Did you talk to Kerry Fowler about this?
I did, he went up and looked at it.
He didn't wanna give an opinion?
No, he didn't wanna do anything.
Didn't wanna do anything.
He was smarter than that.
Thanks, Mark.
Probably weren't the words he chose, but.
No, I, I wasn't there when he went up there, I, I called him and he said, he goes, I'm heading up to the garage right now and he basically, I got the word back from, said no, it's not something he wants to do.
Is this the same problem that it was with the old joystick?
Yeah.
It did the exact same thing?
It, they, when you try to move it, all it does is it lifts boom up and, and extends it out and that's what it does.
And that was the exact same problem with the last one that we've already had.
What's the chance of that?
That's a comeback right there, that's, that's not. That, what that was is some wire got moved underneath the column when they were changing the joystick controls and it worked for a month and then went back to the same thing.
Right. Now they want us to buy another one.
Yeah, and I mean, the odds of it working are probably not gonna be that good or working for any more than two months.
The, the sediment of the folks up at the garage are like, get rid of this thing, because it's nothing but problems.
Please.
Um, yeah, Scott's operated it a lot, so, um.
Well, my only question is if the tractor's still worth something, could we just replace the mower part, would it be worthwhile to just replace?
Look at that, that part of it.
I think we did look at that, um, but I will go, I'll, I'll go back and entertain that one with, uh, with Jeff. Because they looked at the one for the, the attachment that goes on the front of the, um, loader, that was eighty grand. So I'm not sure what the one on the side of the tractor is because they're, they're pretty much the same concept. It's still an over-the-rail mower that's just mounted on the front of your loader, they use it the same control kind of thing to, you know, bring it over the rail and cut with it, so. Adding just that component might be close to that same amount of money, but I'll find out.
How many hours do you think we mow, any idea?
I don't, off the top of my head, I, I don't make any idea, I really don't. I mean, sometimes we just go a week and it's just like a week straight mowing and then you wait until you have to go back out and now that we have the ditch bank flail mower. That takes care of the road, the immediate part of the roadside, like two, two feet in or so, um, we haven't had this thing running enough to get out there and do anything with it this year. So, but on the average, I bet we're, we're out there. A good solid, maybe three weeks, you know, like Monday through Thursday operation type thing.
Is there any way to get a rough estimate on what it would cost to hire that out?
Yeah, we, that.
Like super, super rough, like.
No, we can call a company and, and see what they are charging right now and maybe they'll tell us, you know, what it might be next year, but, um.
Hundred and fifty hours a year. Added time on the loader really isn't very much. You know, if you. Looked at that eighty, eighty grand you said? I mean, we already have that piece of equipment. And they tend to never fail.
No, if we, if we sold, if we sold the tractor, we could probably get, they were talking up there at the garage, like, we might be able to get like, you know, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars for the tractor, I'm not sure if that's correct or not. Um, and put that money toward next year getting. I mean, I don't, we say next year, but the way the prices have been going, next year will be, it'll be ninety thousand, not eighty thousand.
Let me, let me call you tomorrow with the fellows that will look at this.
Okay.
Just, let's, let's go that route, that's what I wanna go with.
Gino go look at it?
Well, no, it wasn't, no, I don't wanna mention any names. Uh, no, there's another fellow that I think he's pretty sharp on all kinds of stuff, he'll tell you if it's worth keeping or not or fixing or not. So let's just, let's, let's just go that route.
I still think that, we still need to know what the diagnosis was on that, on that joystick.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether it was covered under a warranty or not covered under warranty, because if it's another six or seven or eight thousand dollars, it's.
Absolutely.
I mean, they could just dump in good money on top of bad, so.
If you can follow up on that, Mike, we'll do it, get with it next.
I, I agree with Mark, I find it super hard to believe that it's the same exact problem twice with the joystick.
The first one lasted twenty-three years and the second one lasted.
Two months?
No time at all and did the same thing, just doesn't happen.
Favor there at all.
We're gonna move it on to the next meeting, guys, get some more information on it.
That's the plan.
Move to the next meeting then. Um, acceptance of Vermont two fifty, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary commission.
Tom's here.
Yes, if you would like to come up to the podium and speak to this real quick for us, Tom?
Sure. My name's Tom Hughes, I, uh, I should serve on. Their fifteen, that was on the Vermont two hundred and fiftieth anniversary commission. It's related to America two fifty, which is about Declaration of Independence. So the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary event's July fourth, twenty twenty-six, of course. Castleton's big moment is nine months from now, uh, Friday, May ninth, twenty twenty-five. But the commission's work, um, extends till the end of twenty twenty-seven. Hubbardton's big day, of course, will be July seventh, twenty twenty-seven. For instance, um, so these next three years, um, will be busy, uh, in many states and Vermont including. So the commission's asked, um, uh, towns if they'd like to consider, uh, that resolution template. Because there is a cover letter, cover letter, um, that sort of hints that, um. They'd like a copy if it's passed, or any version of it, I mean, you can change it all you want. And, uh, and they sort of hint to guess that, uh, towns would wanna have a liaison to the commission, um, in Vermont or. Uh, and, um, have a town committee, um, to work on two hundred and fiftieth anniversary events. Castleton's a great prospect for that because we've already got a dozen people, um, working on May ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, nine months from now. And, so I'm just curious, uh, and right up at our last planning meeting, um, whether the town manager, the town select board or anybody, um, has any, uh. Preferences in terms of, uh, what Castleton does. Uh, not just with passage of a resolution, but, um, uh, establishing a committee. In nineteen seventy-four and seventy-five, um, my mother and I were, um, on the Castleton bicentennial committee, so that was the two-hundredth anniversary. Now we're at the two-fiftieth, um, and I don't know officially how it worked, it seemed to me at the time, it was nineteen, that, um. The town manager just sort of let anybody on the bicentennial, uh, committee that wanted to and like. Fifty years later, back then, there was town money, grant money, they came in, um, to, uh, do some projects, like legacy projects and having events and all that. And this time there's, uh, town taxpayer money, um, for the, uh, May ninth event. So, uh. You're, you're, you have the option to, you know, make it official with, um, who's got, uh, authority over the event that's being planned and, um, the budget for it.
Okay. You wanna speak to this, Mike, at all, or?
I don't really know a whole lot about it, so, I, I may speaking about it, I'd be just ignorant, so, um, one of the things that, um, when, Tom, you just said a budget. Uh, because this is above and beyond the May ninth budget, is that correct? With, with, uh, is there a budget for this event, of this?
This, the.
The two-fiftieth?
On town meeting day, seven thousand dollars is the budget for that event. If it costs more than that, we'll have to fundraise. Frankly, at this point, I don't know whether it will cost more because it'd be later this month that we, um, ever sit down with, uh, folks at, uh, campus. And find out how much they can co-sponsor this, there are a lot of resources that they have that if they share. I, I don't mean writing checks, but if they, if they share various resources, that would be fantastic and, and make our money go further, which I love.
Can I ask another question? Yeah, absolutely.
So, so just so, because I'm a little confused on it, so I hope you can write me on this one. So, the, the two-hundred and fiftieth is the May ninth event in twenty twenty-five? Castleton's part of this two-hundred and fiftieth, is that what it would be?
As far as I can see, yeah.
Okay, I, I, I know if you're talking about two different events now or if it's still worth.
Well, uh, one is, you know, commission ongoing over three years, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, and the other is, this one town has its history, all kind of happened the same day. It's the day before or hours before the taking of Ticonderoga and the following day taking of Crown Point to, uh, Forts with lots of cannon on Lake Champlain, which is what it was all about, nobody cared about the forts. It was the cannon there, British, um, blockaded Boston Harbor and those cannons who had fixed that, and they did.
But if this, if this two, for this two-fiftieth, um, the committee that goes on to twenty-seven, if the, if the select board appointed a committee. Um, what would be, what would be happening, what would, what would this committee in Castle be doing beyond May ninth of two thousand twenty-five?
The one for the bicentennial, um, we did a commemorative coin type thing, we did, um, with, uh, grant money, uh, the granite curbs in the village, like near the post office and stuff. And maybe some trees there too, um. So, there may have been things that happened past May ninth, nineteen seventy-five, um, but, uh, I don't think we had any other events in, you know. The following year or the year after.
Is there grant money available this time?
Yeah, I keep hearing that there's a thousand dollars per town that you can apply for, for planning or something like that, but I was looking for, for that online. I'm not sure what you're talking about, there, there was earlier for towns that didn't have, uh, internet, uh, service, high-speed internet, um, through some company. And that was run, I think, through Vermont Historical Society, but, uh, wouldn't apply to Castleton. So, I'm, I'm confused, I'm hearing, there is and there isn't, but anyway, it's only a thousand dollars, whatever it is, um. We're, uh, we should be good with seven thousand dollars, you know, approved on, on town meeting day, for which I'm very grateful and, um.
Tom, if we accept this resolution, what, what does this commit the town to? I, I, that's, that's. Nothing?
Not the way I read it.
That's kinda what I was reading too, I.
It, it gives, uh, you know, uh, a liaison can be appointed and so that would be a point person from the commission to, um, you know, deal with the town, but. As it is, they've sent it to the, the town government, I don't know if Mike Selfis got it or was sent forward, but, uh, they sent that resolution out last fall. And, um, uh, as of about a month or two ago, there were, I think, twenty-six towns out of two hundred and fifty-two, um, that, uh, passed that. And, and they tended to be some of the smaller towns, actually.
Okay.
I, I think the only thing about that is it wouldn't seem as urgent, you know, because it applies to next year.
So what I, what I'm hearing out of this is that because the, the voters appropriated the money, um, for the May ninth twenty-five, um, celebration here in Castleton. This, because not everything happened in May ninth of two thousand tw- uh. Um, seventy-five, nine, or seventeen seventy-five, so, um. It's, uh, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of commitment to this, it's just like some form of buy-in into our, our history, our.
But that seven thousand that our voters approved in March will be spent on our day, May, uh, it won't go to these other events.
It was right in the mission, the, the, uh, the motion, rather, um, motion, resolution, um, that it'd be about that date, that event.
Okay, okay.
If there was money that didn't get spent on that and there was something that, I think before they were talking about, they, they created coins and sold coins and, I mean, I guess they could come back and say that's. We have fifteen hundred dollars left over and we'd like to do some fundraising event or something like that.
Yeah.
That money could be used for buying more granite curbing or something.
Sure. So what's the board project, do we? Do we wanna make a motion to accept this resolution? What is your guys' thoughts on it? Have you read, got a chance to read it over? Is there gonna be any harm if we accept the resolution?
Well, it has a potential upside and I don't see any downside.
The last page is, I think, the question that Tom might be seeking too is, does the select board wanna consider a commission? To their structure and who might that be as that liaison?
Is that what you're looking at answer to, is that?
I'm, I'm just going out to the board and the town manager that the town has that, um, uh.
Option? Okay.
And of course, if they took it, then I think that would sort of formalize the local planner's ability to access the money.
Okay.
Which I don't see as a problem either way, but it'd be nice.
If they're gonna spend seven thousand dollars of the taxpayers' dollars, they have to have some formal way of doing that, cause how are they gonna bill?
Right. Yeah. Tom would be the likely liaison. Do you have other folks you're working with right now that would be committee members with you?
Oh, yeah. Joe Mark, Pat Greenwater, that's everybody else this week.
So if we adopted a resolution to make you the liaison and establish a committee of as many volunteers as you need?
Yeah, if you do that, then I'll get back to you with a list of names of folks that say, yeah, we'd like to be formally and, you know, have that.
And some progress reports, so we know.
Absolutely.
What the event is, you're planning and, um.
And like, like a name, something that, whatever you're gonna be titled, cause when we start billing, the accounting office has to, has to have something to bill it against, you know?
The, the events made, which was also in that, uh, resolution from Town Meeting Day, is Ethan Allen in Castleton. So we probably Ethan Allen in Castleton Committee.
Roy, Joe, question?
I guess, uh, Roy Hume, I guess I'm speaking to Tom, but, um, I would encourage you, um, to contact the U.S. Post Office so that they establish a special cancellation stamp for this, for this occasion.
That's a wonderful idea.
And three, that's three, that's a three post office.
Yep, yep.
And you know what I mean by?
You're right, right, right.
Yes.
Cool.
Okay. Why don't you guys understand that?
It, it actually brings people. People will come to town because they need to be there on the day that they first issue this cancellation. It, it will bring people to the event.
Perfect, perfect.
They're postal fans that way.
Thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion, guys? Mr. Brown, you look like you're ready to make the motion. A motion.
Well, I think we need two, right? We need to first make a motion that we accept the Vermont two hundred and fiftieth anniversary resolution.
Yes. Okay.
So I would make a motion that we accept the Vermont two hundred and fifty and a, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary resolution.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I would make a motion that we designate Tom Hughes as the liaison to, uh, organize a committee of volunteers and to update the select board with the plans they have and be able to show us measurable results that you're reaching that point and the same on Town Meeting Day. So people can feel good about.
Can you add in there for the event of Ethan Allen Days in Castleton is right, that's all.
Ethan Allen in Castleton.
Ethan Allen in Castleton.
At this point, I see it mostly as a two-hour event. It's Friday, so after, we'll get home from work at six P.M. until just before dark eight P.M. Trying to put everything into six to eight P.M. But I wanted to include a fantastic dramatization of what the Graymont Boys did in council. And if this is that good, then I'd love to have it have its own separate presentation, Castleton Village School, for the students that afternoon, which would be sort of indoor version of what we do out where the, where the, uh, Lance Club has their auction and events.
Perfect.
Nice.
Perfect.
Did I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
This will be memorialized in the meeting, in the minutes of the meeting too, Tom, so you'll, you'll be in there so you can see that.
If you give me a copy of the resolution when it's signed, I'll take care of sending that to the commission if you want.
So you have, what, about nine months to?
Yes.
And I think you were writing on it.
So maybe we could see you every three months?
Oh, yeah.
And we could let us know what you've accomplished, so we know that this is gonna come off.
If you wrote on the other page, we'll just change out that page.
Though the front page, you're gonna have to, yeah.
Yeah, we do that, that's easy.
Well, I just put Tom Hughes on the top.
Thanks, Tom.
Send this around right now to Mike and have everybody sign it? Okay. Well, I better put my name on it first, right? Or a second, whatever, one, two, three.
Should I should have done that? You're right, Mike.
We could, we could change the front page. It's the signature page that we don't, don't doodle on that one.
There's a copy of the front page. No, he's got that on the back. All right. You made two separate copies. You can use that one for the front page if you want.
Can we talk about the, uh, dirt road program since it wasn't on the agenda?
You, you guys could vote to add it in there. I don't know if there's any people in the public that would wanna be here for it, but that would be only, that'd be the only drawback is if someone didn't see it on there and said, I really wanted to come in and talk about that.
Or were you gonna do that at the next meeting? Did we decide?
Just do it next meeting. I just thought we were a couple of minutes ahead, maybe we'd.
We are not a couple of minutes ahead.
We're a half hour behind.
Oh, you're being a smart, you know what?
Well, eight twenty-five adjourn usually means eleven P.M., so I thought we're actually doing a couple of minutes ahead.
Not tonight. There's the thing you gotta change.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have any purchase orders for approval? Did you guys see any?
Yep.
You did?
I thought.
Oh, boy.
You know what she didn't put on here?
The actual purchase orders?
No, my report. Purchase orders at seven fifty-five, but I don't know if there's any. It'd be with that folder, Bob.
With that blue folder that I just showed you?
And I don't see, I don't see any in the, of the copies.
Purchase orders?
What do you got there, Rob? Did you find something?
They were in our packet.
The warrants, I don't see any purchase orders.
That's just the warrants, right?
No, purchase orders to be approved.
Yeah, but there's no, he can't find the purchase orders himself.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, I see.
Even though there's some in here, Mike.
Well, maybe they got thrown in the folder, Bob, I don't know. So it's, what's it on? It's Royals, Royal.
Royal and Wilk.
And Wilks. Those are the ones that are there.
Uh, yeah, you're right. There's the Royal Group, Royal Group, and Wilk.
And there they are.
You got them? Do you have them, Rob?
I don't have them, no.
There's not copies in there, just written on, it says on the warrant, at the bottom of the warrant, it says what they are, what.
Yes, they are, yeah, you're right. How come we didn't get that on ours?
No, it's on, it's only written on it right here at the bottom of the warrant.
Yeah.
You didn't get photocopies of them in your packet.
Well, I do, I do have, I do have them here.
Yeah, so you, you can go ahead and, you're just gonna sign those anyway?
Yep. You wanna just rattle through them?
I sure can.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order zero five two five one eight to the Royal Group for three thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifty-one cents to install three security cameras at the sewer plant.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order zero five two five one nine to the Royal Group for four thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-one cents to install seven security cameras at the Village School.
Second.
Can you, can you add the fifty percent will be reimbursed by the passive grant? Is that saying on your?
I don't have that.
Can you add that on?
I don't think we need to right now.
We don't need to? Okay. I just wanted to see.
That was in the motion when you guys approved them.
The first one, yeah.
On the first, it was in there.
Okay.
So this is just, he had to redo those, um.
Yeah, we took a gamble because we didn't know if it was the fifty percent that we had to approve or the whole thing.
Okay, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, perfect.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order zero five two five seven nine to Wilk paving for the sum of one hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and nine dollars and seventy-nine cents for paving the Blissville Road, and that's our twenty percent match.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
That's not our twenty, that's, that's the total, but we, we have to, we have a twenty percent match.
Okay. So strike the last pair.
All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Warrants?
Yes, please, if you would, be so kind.
Can I do them all at once?
Absolutely.
Uh, make a motion to approve warrant zero eight one two A for the sum of twenty thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant number zero eight one two R for the sum of eleven thousand thirteen dollars. Warrant number zero eight zero nine for the sum of forty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Warrant number zero eight one two for the sum of two hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents. Warrant number zero seven two five P for the sum of twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-one cents. Warrant number zero eight zero one P for the sum of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. And warrant number zero eight zero eight P for the sum of twenty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mary Lee?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. I'll start with you, Mr. Brown. You can start signing those if you would, please.
Yep.
Give you guys just a couple of seconds to do that, so we can go to it. We got done, it's over.
One more to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, usually there's a, there's a place drawn that says select board approval, no, down lower in the, like, writing. No, it's not written in there. It's usually written, I'm not sure. Great. Yeah, right here.
Right there. That one has it. Do I sign that, or?
Yeah.
Just that one spot?
Yep.
There's three in total, right? There's three total.
So these were new ones, that's why they didn't get written on there, cause, um, so if you could just sign, yeah, just.
On each one?
Yeah, on each one of them.
Like right in the body or?
Yeah, like where the, you see the, the one in the red, yeah, right there.
Right there?
Yeah.
And I know, one with the red, I know where to sign it, there?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I put them back in this folder? Okay, you, you guys all set? Oh, no, yeah. All right, you're still working on those, all right. I gotta sign them all too, yeah, yeah, just leave them there and I'll take care of them. Um. Oh, no, we have your report.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Sorry.
That's too bad.
Not on the agenda.
That's a blessing, Mary Lee, that's a, that's a real blessing.
It's not on the agenda.
I was gonna ask if you, if there's any questions that anybody had on it.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll do that.
On what?
Um, my report didn't make it on the, on the, um, agenda itself, but I, you shouldn't have copies of it in your, in your bag.
I have an email of it.
Here's an extra copy, just if you.
Oh, perfect.
I brought, didn't you?
Do you guys have any questions on his manager's report for?
No.
I did not.
You did not? How about you, Mr. Brown? Did you get a chance to look at?
I, yeah, I read it online. I thought we were gonna discuss part of it, but I didn't have any questions on it.
No questions on it? What do you wanna do, Mr. Tom? Do you wanna wait till the next meeting and, um, do a double duty? Is there anything real important that you wanna speak about, or?
Well, I just wanted to give it, I do wanna, just, there's two things. If I, if I could.
Go for it.
So the Parsons Hills sidewalk project, um, if you saw them out there today, they're digging. Um, so once, that was, that was a telltale thing is once that gets going, that means it's gonna go and they're not, they're gonna wanna finish this thing as fast as possible. So that, that has started. Um, and I wanted to bring up, um, the fact that we, we had a VOSHA, OSHA inspection, um, last week and, uh, the, the comments were, overall, we're doing a really good job. There was, they have their hit list every year, what they look for, and, um, labeling of cleaning products. I don't know if you, you get this as your business? So you have to label the cleaning products. Um, now, I thought it was for like, if you bought a, a bottle, like a spray bottle, that's not labeled, you bought it as a, you know, aftermarket thing and you put something in it, you're supposed to label it to say what's in there. They're saying we have to label everything. I'm trying to get clarification on that, cause every, every, uh, place got written up for it, cause we didn't know about it.
Like you'd have to label a bottle of Windex?
Yeah, Windex, we have to put on Windex.
Like if you buy it in bulk and put it into, you know, aftermarket sprayer? I mean, it's blue liquid in a sprayer, it's glass cleaner, but it has to be labeled as such.
But I asked him, there was, cause at the garage, they had a bottle of, uh, Fantastic Spray, and they had some Clorox wipes.
They want you to label that.
And I said, we have to label those. He said, yep, you just put a label on it and say what? I'm like, that makes no sense to me.
Even though it says it already.
And it has the poison control stuff on it and all that. And so I, I called our weight, our, our loss consultant from VLCT and said, I need something in writing that says that, that, that really is the requirement, cause I, I get that if you bought it in bulk and you put it in there.
Yeah.
If someone drinks a bottle of Blue Gatorade and it's Windex. Um, and, uh, they said, he said, I'll, I'll send it to you. He goes, the spirit of this thing was supposed to be that, just for that purpose, not that you bottled, uh, buy a bottle of Fantastic and you gotta write on it that it's fantastic. So, but if that's the case, then every place that we had would be in violation. And then they had.
I don't think I'm gonna fault anybody for not writing that on top of the bottle, but.
I'm trying to get.
Try to be better next time.
Yeah, I know, it's just like, damn it, we're just so far behind. But it'll still take like thirty days to get the report, and I'm trying to get ahead of it to find out what the real requirement is, so that we're already underway and I can, cause I'm gonna obviously request the informal, um, consultation or meeting with them to fight it. And they usually, that's where you plead down the fines. But they also hit us up, uh, one of their big things was Hazcom Plan, where your SDS sheets and stuff are in, and then, um, lockout, tagout procedures and the training that gets documented along with it. We had some places that had it, some places didn't, um, not consistent, I guess. And storage of flammable liquids or products in non-flammable cabinets. And we, we've been pounding this one. It's like, you know. Put it in the flammable cabinet. The first cabinet they opened was a, a bottle of butane in it. And the first thing he did was. And the first thing he did was, he grabbed it out of my hand when I took it, and said, we're gonna get that in the flammable cabinet, and he said, put it back, he said, I get to take a picture of it. Picture's worth a thousand dollars. So, we may get some hits on, uh, when we get it, but, um, overall, I went around every facility with them, and, um, they, the, our employees are making improvements on those little things like not having anything near electrical panels, 36 inches in front of them, and, you know, all those type of things, so, we didn't have one place found for that. Um, so, we're, we're continuing to make strides, and this, this will probably cement it, because when Wade Masur comes around and, and sends his loss report stuff to us, and I send it out saying, you gotta fix this stuff, and reply back to me by this date, and I reply back to Wade, and they take it off the bad boy list, 'cause that's how we get passive grants and the scholarship. If we're over a certain percentage, um, of deficiencies, then we can't apply for the grants. So that's why, so they, they, they tease you with the money to make sure you stay in compliance, 'cause it's cheaper to stay in compliance and then get fines. That's, that was the, that was what I wanted to bring up, those two big things, um. You had to dress in?
Yep. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Well, I have oil and gas in my little shed.
They just recorded that bullshit, they're gonna be here tomorrow. Yeah, we should, either we get a container for that, 'cause I, um, 'cause I think the, um, historical cemetery has, uh, some tools, I don't think any power tools, though. They do?
Oh, I have chainsaws.
They should be, all be in the, anything with fuel in it, so, we can, we can put one in there. They're like 400 bucks, so.
Like metal cabinet or something?
Has to be flammable cab, rated flammable cabinet.
You gotta have it, you gotta have it.
Does the, uh, hedge trimmers for the U trees down at the monuments gas too?
I'd rather not intermingle your stuff with the highway garage stuff, so, I'd rather put one out there, and, so just come and see me and we can get one ordered. That's, that's all I had.
You got it covered. Okay. Any questions from the board, Tom Mike?
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, sorry. This answers the question that Rob had. The generator down at the main pump station, it's not that it doesn't have an automatic transfer switch, it's not, it's so, it's old enough where they can't do the program, there's no programming to, for it to start up on itself once a week and run to do the testing, so that's, that's what it is, it's not that it doesn't have an automatic transfer switch. So I spoke, I spoke to Brookfield today, they came down, looked at it, they're gonna give us a quote on it, but we talked, I think, the last meeting about maybe just keeping that one and building a, something, you know, we can get it out of the trailer. Um, but it, you asked a question to me about that, and it, it does have an automatic transfer switch, it just can't speak program to start myself. And the one at the town garage, is got an oil leak on it, so Kerry's gonna come back and pull it and bring it to the shop to fix it, but, it's under warranty.
That cat generator's a really, really nice piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was under the impression that they wanted to get rid of it because it didn't start on its own when we were down there.
Right, that if the power went out, someone would have to go down and start it.
Yeah, but that's not the case now.
It just doesn't do a weekly test.
Right, and, and they can't, 'cause it doesn't have the computer programming to do the automatic start stuff to test it. And the one at the, at the pump sucker, Brook pump station, the other day when we had the power outage, it failed again, for low coolant. So I called them today, told them we're not paying that bill, uh, until they get this fixed, 'cause they put the block heater in it, since they put the block heater in it, it's been low coolant. So two times, it's tried to start on a power failure and it hasn't been able to start.
Is Brookfield the one that said that cat generator couldn't be programmed to start once a week or whatever? I mean, that just makes no sense to me. That, there is a piece of equipment that will start if you just hold two wires together. Right? It seemed to me that that would be a really, really simple switch to start once a week.
I'll, I'll look into it again, when I, I'm gonna talk to, um, Jim, the owner of Brookfield, and just say, tell me why, give me some details, 'cause we heard it from Russ.
Don't you think, Rob?
Yeah, it's a pretty simple motor, I don't know what the programming would be on a computer, but.
Right, doesn't have fuel.
It just, it just needs a timer to turn it on and then kill the fuel switch.
Doesn't have electronic fuel injection, it doesn't have any ignition, I mean, it just would start with a key or a push button. Seemed like it'd be way simpler to make that start than a modern one.
I mean, as far as buying another generator, it wouldn't be that hard just to have somebody stop by there once a week and start it too.
That's what they do, they do that now.
Yeah, I mean.
As part of his checks, he goes down there and he runs it, by, you know, manually starts it, uh, like it would if it was on an automatic, but we do it right now. I don't, I don't think spending 80,000 plus dollars
On a generator.
For someone to go down and do, so they can't start it once a week manually, that, that makes no financial sense.
Correct.
So, that, I, I've been an advocate of keeping that, that big generator, just building a better housing system for it.
Right, you couldn't buy a better one for any money.
Power of the town, was it?
According to, we heard that like four or five times, so. Alright, that's, that's all I have, Bob.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I have no executive, I don't, I don't have anything that would need to go in executive session unless you guys do.
Oh, we're not gonna skip to that yet, we're gonna do select board comments and, and/or concerns. Mary Lee?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
You know, it's easy.
Okay.
I met with the planning permission, like, I was asked. I gave them the two things that we had discussed, and said that we all did agree on it. And they read them. Second one, they didn't mind too much, but they don't mind our trailer long enough. I pointed out to them, I have 173 acres. Got no place to park the motorhome with a trailer, because that's what else is on the back of it. And they pointed out to me, will somebody get, and we have a quarter acre lot, they had, put it on the side. Should've gotten that fully mounted one acre lot.
Quarter acre lot.
Quarter acre lot. So, the second one, they didn't seem to mind, but they're gonna come back on the first one, because they think it should be parked.
Which one?
The trailer should be parked behind the house.
The camper one we had, remember?
And.
You know, you look at Bob and Mary McIntyre's house, the garage is in front of the house. So they could park it behind the garage, but it would still be in front of their house.
But it wouldn't be legal, according to.
Wouldn't be legal, there's no way that you could make it legal.
Correct.
It's kinda like saying you can't own one unless you wanna store it somewhere, unless you can put it behind your house. But that, that was the big, big thing on it.
They're gonna come to us with their recommendation, though?
Well, they're gonna come with a lot of new things. They can't write, they can't type, zoning administrator's in there several times, permits in there, and then it's crossed off. There's so many typographical errors in it, you can't believe it. Sentence is not finished. If you ever wanna sit down with me, I got them all listed. But I didn't know if it was appropriate to actually vote on this, or just be aware that they don't agree with us.
I don't know, I don't think we can vote on it if we can't come to some kind of resolution with them. I don't, I don't feel comfortable about that.
It's okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, that's my opinion, I don't know what you guys feel about it. You're talking about the UDR, is what you're talking about, right? Yeah, yeah.
Well, I can't approve the UDR the way they have it worded now, so. That's how that falls.
I feel the same way.
So, we'll put it on hold? Again?
Till they come back to you with their changes.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna have to do, I think, yeah.
I'm assuming they're gonna go back to the whole group, not just me.
I would prefer that they come back to the whole group, 'cause Rob knows what he needs, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can relay that message, or you can relay that message to him, Mike?
Yeah.
Yep, please. Anything else, Mary Lee?
No, that's all I have.
How about you, Rob?
I got nothing this week.
Nothing this week?
Oh, yeah, actually I do. What was the deal with the line painting on the roads around here? That was a disaster, huh?
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna repaint my truck for me?
People, got my, somehow people got my cell phone number and it was. Vtrans was down here today, um, that guy that I put his name in there, Amario or Emilio or whatever, he was down here today, and he said, wow, you're right. And so, um, I connected him with Jeff, and they were traveling around taking pictures, and they'll engage with the company, but the company is the one that has to deal with the people that are claiming that they got paint in their cars. But I told, I, I put in Vtrans' lap, 'cause I'm like, he's letting, let, kinda letting them off the hook, 'cause they're the ones that hired them.
Yeah.
And they need to know what kind of work they were doing, so maybe that weighs into their decision in the future, is if they're doing shoddy work, don't bring them back in town. Um, but ultimately, it's not Vtrans that'll be paying for the damages, it'll be the company, um, that, that did the painting, but they were, the, the gentleman was down here today, traveling, and he said, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, is there's so many places that the paint isn't there anymore. So it's, they're gonna have to redo a lot of it on a day that's not raining.
I got a phone call from Demi Trio.
Did you?
Today.
Okay.
Um, asking me, I had taken photos, because we had quite a lot of paint coming in through our yard.
Yeah.
And, um, he asked me to send him the photos, that could've dated and timed and all of that, yeah.
I mean, they'll, they'll have to do something, 'cause there was two, there was a lot of complaints, this, this was like, a lot, I say a lot. I mean, there's probably a dozen people that have come forth right now and said, I got paint on my cars and it was like floating on the road. Yeah. I, I saw them drive by on their truck, and we were sitting, and I was standing with that, the guy that rode us up for all the VOSHA stuff. Um, and, and I said, that doesn't look good, 'cause it was just a lot of overspray, and then, like, 20 minutes later, it rained.
Oh, my.
Into my yard.
It was, it was.
That's, that's the yellow paint, and that's coming across the road. And we got to get to this one, whoops, there's another one.
I had no clue, it was not bad.
Look at, that's where it's all just starting to come.
Yeah.
It's brutal.
Yeah.
They didn't do them from my house.
And, and I, I had texted Rob about it, and he had me, he said, drive down and see if it's going down the road or up the road, 'cause it was going north, and there were like big fuzzy bubbles of it up against the guardrails that goes down into the lake.
Yeah, you see it running right down our yard?
No, I didn't see it.
It's like a waterfall.
It's a, whatever they used, it, it wasn't, I don't think it was just that it was, it was in rain or something, but.
And you can flick sideways and there's more pictures, but.
The, the stuff that you're seeing too is the glass beads, so that, when the truck went by, they were spraying, and they had another chute coming right out behind it, was the glass beads that go on the paint, it helps dry it, but it also supposed to be reflective, and.
It didn't help that dry.
That's the white stuff that's coming out.
No, no, it did not do good at all.
So, I mean, this is one of those, we pay attention and say, maybe that's the company we don't use again?
Yeah.
I wanna see how they, how they honor the claims that go against this. You know, if they're, if they're gonna not honor the claims or be difficult about it, then maybe we don't wanna.
Is this a company that we've used before?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend anybody, I wouldn't stand by their work. Right, to, to you guys, and so, I'm just, I'm gonna pay attention to how that works, so.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mark, did you have any?
I'm good.
I just wanna make a comment. For a lot of years now, I've taken care of the waste from the Castleton Lions Club auction. And this is the.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, no, I'm not, not looking for that. But my experience up to the Castleton Transfer Station has probably been the, the best this year that it has in any past years. I always usually try to clear it with the town manager, and I, like I did this year, and he makes the arrangements and lets the guys know what the transfer station and I'm coming, or whatever with the stuff, and it's just been the best experience this year. In years past, I've been, oh, we can't take it now, you gotta come back a day or two from now, and it just, it never worked out in years past that well, as it has this year, so I, I just. I, I wanna thank the, I wanna thank the, it just makes my little duty a whole lot easier.
I'll pass it on.
Yeah, I appreciate that up there. Yep. That's all I got for tonight. Any brief recap or items for follow-up, guys? Do we, we don't normally have anything, do we? You guys have anything?
Airbnb regulations, are we making progress on that?
I'm, I still gotta look into some more stuff on that. We got busy with other stuff in the year, and I was waiting for, to see if the chief would, would come up with like a parking ordinance or anything like that. Karen had said something about they were working on a parking ordinance, so I was waiting to see what that looked like before we wrote up a part about how many parking spots you need.
It's, it's the whole traffic ordinance?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, Pete's been inundated with case stuff right now, so we haven't got back to it, but it's, it's on our, it's on our long-term, short-term, and near-term radar.
And the UDR has something about that as well, right, parking?
There's some parking stuff in there for like businesses and.
I think they're only for businesses and like rental, rental homes and.
Oh, I thought they had a section on rental homes, no?
I think there was some stuff on, uh, there was some stuff about, on the UD, I mean, on the short-term rentals, I'm not sure about rentals, uh, in, in there, about how, you can't, so they, people didn't park on the neighbor's property and all that kinda stuff.
But, yeah, you gotta get that before you can finish, for sure.
To be honest with you, I'm, I'm probably, it's probably gonna be like September, by the time we get through that, 'cause it's, we're taking a 1978 policy and trying to update it.
We seem to always have enough other stuff to get done, too, so. For sure.
Are we still gonna invite the short-term rental people in?
We're gonna have to when the time comes, yeah.
Okay. I just don't wanna get this policy all written up and say, hey, now what do you think of it, you know, I, I, I think we should need to get their input ahead of time.
Yeah, well, we have to have some sort of policy to bring to them to see if.
We're not, we're not close to that.
If they're forward or not. We're pretty close, but we're not there yet.
Okay, okay, alright, alright. I'm gonna be on you guys for that, so. Action items? I have no idea with that.
Things that, that were here that need to follow up, like, needs to be done?
We just discussed the major one, I think. Yeah, okay. And did you, did you say you didn't need any executive sessions?
I don't need anything if, unless you guys have something going.
For personnel, okay. Rob, are you all set with executive session?
Yeah, okay. Mark, you're all set?
Yep.
I guess we'll, uh, go into executive session for personnel? With the, I'll make a motion. Okay, we make a motion to go into executive session for personnel at 9:28 with the select board and the town manager? Get a quick vote on that?
Second?
Okay. Okay.